I'd like to call to order the regular meeting agenda Monday, April 11th. It's now six o'clock. Please join Councilmember Osborne in the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we gather today blessed with freedom and blessed to be together to do the work of our city. We ask for your wisdom, your critical thinking, and your courage to make the tough choices we do for our citizens. We ask for the protection of our public safety, our soldiers, and anyone who puts themselves in harm's way for our lives. We all go through trials, but with them, we have the joy to rely on you. And with this, I ask for the healing of our sick and, most of all, the wiping away of cancer from the face of this earth. In your mighty name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, we're all here this evening, so we'll go to Communications. We have two communication items. The first item is a presentation from Burnett Mills, Executive Director of the West Valley Arts Council, on highlights of the third annual Goodyear Lakeside Music Fest, scheduled April 16th. Of course, the art and culture coordinator, Galene Oslansky, will introduce the presenter. Galene?
Thank you, Mayor Lord, Council. It is with great pleasure that tonight I get to introduce Bernadette Mills, Director of the West Valley Arts Council. The City of Goodyear has partnered with the West Valley Arts Council for over 20 years, bringing dynamic, engaging programs and events to the city, and the Third Annual Lakeside Music Fest is no different. With that, I would like to turn this over to Bernadette.
Thank you, Galene, and welcome. Thank you, everybody, for having me. As you know, we have been working with you all for a very long time and with Newland Communities, and it's been a great partnership, and we are very excited about this year's Lakeside Festival. I know many of you have attended over the past years. It has grown in numbers since we changed it from the Symphony Pops Concert, what, three years ago? It was to, you know, to turn it into a huge music festival that's free and diverse and open to all kinds of families. We have a great lineup this year. We're very excited about. I have to really give kudos to Galene, who I've been working with since she came onboard. She has been the best partner that one can have. She comes with ideas and excitement. You know, she comes with an idea that she wants as much diversity in music as possible, and this year is definitely, definitely diverse, and there's something for everybody. We have 13 hours of contin- wait, not 13. We have nine hours of continuous music. We have 13 bands featured this year. About, almost a year ago, Galene introduced us to a gentleman who is with the Alice Cooper Solid Rock Foundation, and we have been working this past year a lot with this foundation. Those of you know, Alice Cooper is Scottsdale. He's actually a West Sider. He grew up in Glendale. And every year, he has a huge festival. It's a competition called something the pudding, something with pudding.
Christmas pudding.
Christmas pudding. Thank you. I always forget the name of that because it's just so odd. But out of that concert, he vets like the best talent in the Phoenix area. And from that, this past year, the festivals, the concerts that we do in Surprise and Buckeye have featured many of the up-and-coming artists that come out of his competition. And it's not just Alice Cooper-type music. It's not hard rock. It is everything from country to pop, indie, et cetera. And so some of the featured bands that we have this year that I'm really excited about that come through this partnership with Solid Rock, we've got Taylor Upsall, who is a pop, indie, folk singer. She's 16 years old. She's a songwriter. She grew up listening to her dad's bands. She's been performing since she was five. We have Laura Walsh, who was recently featured on American Idol, and she's a pop-country singer, and she was the soloist winner of the 2014 "Proof Is In The Pudding" Talent Search. And then Marcos Crego, which is in the top corner, he's a two-time Emmy-nominated Cuban pianist, and he's bringing his entire band, and they're going to wrap up the night. They're going to be the headliner at the end of the night, and they're just going to be dynamic and awesome. We're also featuring Alice's son's band called Co-op, which is, you know, as you can remember, we have a stage, and this year's stage is bigger than ever, and we have a side stage. So every, every time there's nothing on the side stage, there's something on the main stage, and it just goes back and forth. But Alice Cooper's son's band called Co-op is definitely a little bit more hard rock, but remember, they're going to be on the side stage, so if you're not, it's not your cup of tea. You can go up, see the food vendors or all the other vendors we have. We have a little bit of everything, country, rock, pop. We've got it all for everyone. We even have African drumming, classic rock. We have cover bands. We have a band called Innocent Elaine, which plays music from like Green Day, Nirvana, pop-rock mostly. Vintage music, band from the 1950s called Comeback Buddy, which has a huge following as well. And we have a Kids Zone. We're going to have, the Goodyear's going to have their mobile museum, and we're going to have lots of kids' activities. We're going to have a drumming circle for the kids this year, so it'll be very interactive. And we will definitely do the Mayor's Select Show, which we do every year, which is always a great addition to honor the local high school talent. And these are just some pictures, and I really do hope you'll join us. It's going to be a great night, and the weather is going to be divine. So I anticipate we'll hit our numbers probably close to 8,500, I'm hoping. And that's it. That is the information about this year's festival. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain.
Well, I'm sure there are some comments. That was just a great presentation. Anybody would like to talk about it? Joanne?
Just, you know, thank you. This looks fabulous, and it sounds like it's going to be a great time. Appreciate it.
Sherri?
I love this event. I think it's absolutely wonderful. It is so much fun for anyone who hasn't come up there, especially by the lake and everything. You guys just do a great job. And I got to give a plug. There's a local kids' band, I don't want to really call them kids, young adults band. It's called Vibe. It's some seventh grade, seventh and eighth grader from the schools up there. So there's some local, local Goodyear kids up there, so come and celebrate them, too.
Well, I just think it's great venue. When we lost the, you know, the orchestra, I thought, oh, this will never be the same. But it is really swinging. People love it. And there's all ages up there, so I think it's just a great place to be. Just bring your sunscreen for the early hour and then bring your drinks for the later hour, I guess, so.
TCA is providing sunscreen, and also I have it on good authority that Alice is out of town, but he is coming back that day, and he loves to see his son play. So if he can make it, he will be there, and he'll be onstage to welcome everybody as well. So we're working on it.
That might, that might be a Twitter picture.
Yeah, definitely.
All right. You're on for that. Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And lastly, Galene, you are a jewel, and we, we love what you do and all the things you do, and so you've been very helpful to us.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, the next communication item is a summary of the 2016 record-breaking spring training season. We have Bruce Kissman, the General Manager of the Ballpark. Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And as you just said, it was another fantastic spring training season at Goodyear Ballpark. This past season, 159,280 fans came through the gates, 6% increase over last year's record-breaking season as well. And we also set another single game attendance record of 11,616. That was on March 19th, the Indians versus Cubs game. Also that night, actually, before I get to that far, here's the attendance over the course of, over the years, and as you can see, again, we had a 6% increase in attendance this past year. And of course, that night, who can forget, Jeanne Wilson, Section 117, Row S, Seat Number Two. She was our millionth fan that came through our gates, and that was just absolutely just a fabulous night and evening at the ballpark. How we started this promotion is we narrowed it down to half of the ballpark through one half, in between one of the half-innings. Then we narrowed it down to one section, so the anticipation started to build. And then we announced what row it was in and then the seat number, and you can probably still hear Jeanne's screams echoing throughout the ballpark. She was had to be probably one of the most excited persons I've ever met. But as you see, we kind of threw a little celebration party in the stands. The next half inning, we introduced her to the entire crowd, and thanks to Mr. Balki for being part of that presentation. As you can see in the photo there, we presented her with a golden fan. And then after the game, gave her a nice commemorative jersey, Goodyear 16, and also on that plaque, it says "One Million Fan" to represent. She also had the opportunity to win $1 million, $10,000 or Vegas prize pack, and fortunately, she did walk away with the Vegas prize pack, and she did not win the million. Nonetheless, it was a great celebration. And this past season also marks another gross revenue increase of about 2% over last year. Most of that comes from ticketing, which correlates to the attendance, but also the concessions. We had a 6% increase in gross revenue in concessions. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank our partners with Professional Sports Catering, who really delivered for us through the season with their rebranding of the concession stands, the portable carts, the service, the operations that they delivered through the, throughout the entire spring training season. It's been absolutely phenomenal, and we appreciate their support. Of course, we still remain focused on delivering the best fan experience found in the Cactus League, from our millionth fan promotion to our home run readers, to partnering with the other departments with the Fix the League program, increasing our Kids' Days Sundays. You can see the photo down there on the bottom with the superheroes bringing the character meet and greets. Bubblehead giveaways went extremely well. This year, we also had two ballpark weddings before the games. And of course, our in-game promotions with Tanika as our on-field emcee, we delivered the best fan experience found in the Cactus League. And of course, we're not done yet. Two days after the season ended, we went right into the Flavors of the West event, which featured the Gin Blossoms. Quick turnaround at the ballpark, had a little bit over, about 3,500 people come out for, for that event, the Wolves Classic, and then this past weekend, we had the Blacklight Run, which returned for its third run here on Saturday night with a little over 4,000 runners. Wow. Yeah, it was an absolutely fantastic event, and if you've never seen this before, it's really cool, especially at night with all the glowing powder and everything under the black lights. Really unique event, and we're lucky to have it out here. They will be returning later on this year in November for a second run this year. And as you can see, we have a really packed upcoming next two months at the ballpark as well. We'll continue to stay busy with another bubble run, starting to get into tournament season, and then also graduation season as well. That is, that is our presentation, so.
Thank you so much. Comments from any of the council? Wally?
I thought it was a wonderful season, and the volunteers were just outstanding. They just, I think one year they're great, and then the next year, they're even greater. I mean, they're just, we just appreciate that, but the food was wonderful. I promised you I'd try all the different things, and I did. They were, it was really, really good, and I think most of the fans were really pleased with how it went. So thank you for all you did, Bruce. I know that y'all worked awfully hard, and then you worked nonstop for 30 days during spring training, and then you've got this busy schedule, but we all appreciate all that all of you and your staff does for us.
Bill?
Bruce, if you could obviously be sure to pass along our comments to, to the staff. It was, looking at the chart that you had from the 2009 season all the way through, I remember sitting on the Citizen Budget Committee back in 2009 and '10, and the ballpark kept coming up as a constant source of discussion and the lack of revenue and the, and what was it doing to us financially? And now to see where we are, we're almost $2 million ahead in revenues from that opening season until now, and, and it's interesting when we don't continue to see the vision going forward. So this is such a great story in 2016 of the vision being realized over time, and that's such a great chart, that, that revenue chart, to tell the folks from 2009, you know, go back and tell your old self what a, you know, just hang in there, stick with the vision, and we'll, we'll move it, we'll move it forward. And that, that was not done by any other heavy lifting than the ballpark staff, and we've got great people working down there. And the fact that we continue to be the most-used, great ballpark experience. I've done a lot of traveling this spring, and I have seen a lot of people coming into this, into the region from other places, and they're all coming out for spring training, and they're, they're missing a great spring training opportunity. So I become, you know, a quasi-cheerleader out when they talk about coming to see a ballgame out, out on the West Side and our stadium specifically. So I'm confident in doing that because of what you guys have done, so thanks.
Good comments, Bill. Joanne?
Well, congratulations. I know this doesn't just happen. It takes your team, it takes your insights, it takes your hard work, and so I really appreciate that. I had shared with Bruce, Easter weekend, actually, my daughter was going home, back to Texas, and she took a little snapshot snap of a lady there at the airport because she had her Goodyear ballpark bag. And so she was like, oh, gosh, Mom, look. And so it was hilarious, but it was like, yes, you know, so, so good job. Thank you for all you guys have been doing.
Carolyn?
I think, excuse me, I think this is a very impressive lift of graduations that is going to be held at the ballpark. And just, I personally would like to see the number of all the graduates when you add all of those graduations together, if those numbers come to you in any way, because I think that would be a very impressive number for us to tout of young people that, that had the honor and the privilege, and we had the honor and privilege of graduating from, out of the Goodyear Stadium. And the other thing I just wanted to say, I had the opportunity to talk to several fans. I would say, I'm not going to say dozens, but a dozen or more fans, I talked to them. And with, to the person, they said that the ballpark they most enjoyed was Goodyear. And I think that's high praise because we know that there are, we have a plethora of ballparks in, in the Valley of the Sun, so congratulations to you for that. And thank you, and again, I too would like to add our thanks to the staff and the volunteers. Their work is what make it enjoyable for the fans to be here, so, thanks.
Sherri?
I'm just going to add on to that. A thank you and your staff for such a great season, and it's not just a season, it's a year-round thing that you guys work so hard on. And you do hear it from the spring training fans, but you also hear it from the people that are out here for the runs, how well-organized every one of the staff is, from the parents of the Little League that get so excited to get a play on like a real, you know, major league ball field type of thing. So I, I think it's just so important, everything that you've scheduled there and how it just touches all ages and all aspects of our community. So thank you all and your staff for everything you do. It's a great job.
Yes, I agree with everything they said tonight. You put a lot of smile on a lot of faces, a lot of spirit is there, and where else in our city do we have so many people that come in that have hours of enjoyable time at that baseball stadium, no matter what they're there for? So thanks again, I really appreciate it. Thanks for coming up and giving us the briefing.
Thank you.
All right, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-adjunct items. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Then we're going to go on to the Consent Agenda. Will the City Clerk please read the Consent Agenda Item 6.1 and 6.2 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes from a regular meeting held on March 28th, 2016. Item 6.2, adopt Resolution Number 16-1750, adopting the City of Goodyear Emergency Operations Plan 2016 Edition.
Thank you. Does anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? All right, with that, then could I please have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second.
I'm not sure who he said, okay, the motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right, we're going to go to the business items, and just remind you again about questions, refraining until the presentation is done. But I do ask staff on some of these presentations, I know on the signage presentation, there might be moments that work to stop and let them talk about it, because there's quite a bit of information on that. So I read it over twice today, trying to figure out where the breaks are, but I just decided that if they have a question on, on a sign, because there's so many variances on those signs, or different types in different locations. Okay, so we'll go on to 7.1, which is a public hearing to consider amending the resolution of intention for the West Goodyear Special Improvement Project area for regional water delivery main improvements. Open the public hearing. A long range planner, Joe Schmidt, hello, Joe, will present this item, and so he'll be presenting Items 7.1 and 7.2, but we will have separate hearings and the several vote on them, okay? Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, good evening. As the mayor indicated, we'll have one presentation for the next two items related to the West Goodyear Special Public Improvement Area and the West Goodyear Cost Recovery Resolutions. Just to refresh your memories, the boundaries for the West Goodyear Cost Recovery area is to the north is I-10, to the east is roughly Cotton Lane, to the south is roughly MC-85, and on the west is Perryville Road. We started this back in 2006 when the council adopted Resolution 61064, which identified nine lines for water lines that would be built and subject to cost recovery. So if a developer would build the line, the cost recovery resolution was set up so that as others tied into the line, they would pay their proportionate share of the cost. There were, five of the nine lines were built, of the water lines, that is, and then a master water study was updated in 2014, which adjusted some of the lines and some of the assumptions in the 2006 resolution, and, but only for the lines that had not yet been constructed. And so those changes were made when the council adopted Resolution 141621 in 2014, and the, which included revised cost estimates for four of the unbuilt lines. Likewise, at the same time, a cost recovery resolution was adopted for regional wastewater trunk lines. The 14 lines that were identified over the last few years, six were built, and again, the master wastewater study was updated in 2014, and a revised, a new resolution was adopted at that time, which included revised cost estimates for seven lines, deleted one line, and added two additional lines to the cost recovery program. Tonight, you'll be considering Resolution 161747 for the water lines and Resolution 161748 for the wastewater lines, and I'll explain what's involved with those in just a second. This is a map and identification of the four unconstructed lines. These represent about $2 million worth of public infrastructure improvements that are yet to be made. The other lines that had been built represent about $3.5 million worth of improvements that have already been made. There's nine unconstructed sewer lines. Those represent $8.3 million worth of sewer lines that have not yet been constructed, and the other lines that have been constructed represent $11.7 million of infrastructure that has been put in place. The current cost recovery resolution requires construction of an entire line segment when the line is constructed and as outlined in the cost recovery resolution. And what's being proposed tonight is to allow segmentation of lines where appropriate, which will allow partial construction of the lines that is consistent with a phasing plan. And when doing that, we would administratively reallocate the percentage responsibility for each line segment. So for an example, if you take Sewer Line G1 on the map, you can see there, it has a section that runs east-west, and then a section that runs north-south. That's Lower Buckeye Road, east-west, and that's Citrus Road, north-south. There's 640 feet in Lower Buckeye Road and 640 feet in, in Citrus. So for a total length of 1,280 feet, if only a portion of the line is constructed, then the cost for that line would be allocated based on the proportionate share that is of the line that is constructed. In this case, in the example, it would be 50% of the line, and it would be a portion, reapportioned to the properties on that basis. We would also split out the design costs because some of the lines are being designed all in one piece, and if only a portion of the line gets built, then we have to prorate the design and engineering costs at the same time. This is a table out of one of the cost recovery resolutions, which indicates how Line G1 was allocated to the developments that are listed, Arapodera, Pepsill Ridge, and Las So we aren't changing the percentages from the previous cost recovery resolutions, only in the instance of reallocating it if it's billed as a partial line. And then this is an example, again, that the percentage responsibility doesn't change, it's just that the line cost for design and construction would be split 50-50. In terms of public participation for a cost recovery resolution, notice to the affected parties is required 30 days in advance of the public hearing. We did that, and as well, we published a notice in the Southwest Edition of the Arizona Republic on March 11th, 30 days in advance of the hearing. By allowing partial construction of the lines, it allows, we hope it will spur development in the West Goodyear area by facilitating phasing, and which in turn can help minimize upfront cost in order to get things going. The city will collect one-half of 1% of any reimbursement collected to offset the city's costs in administering the cost recovery resolution, and it is the staff recommendation that you approve the amendments proposed by Resolution 161747 for the water delivery lines and Resolution 161748 for the wastewater trunk lines.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the City Clerk please read Resolution 16-1747 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 16-1747, amending Resolution of Intention Number 06-1064, as amended by Resolution Number 14-1621, to provide for reimbursements for regional water delivery main improvements identified as special public improvements in the West Goodyear Central Planning Area, Special Public Improvement Project area, when only portions of the water deliver main improvements are constructed and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion a second, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Osborne, a second from Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo.
Joanne, I asked this question earlier on a couple pieces in the fiscal analysis, and I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. Couple, couple parts. First part on the, what do you call it, segmentation of the lines? Are there any lines, once they're put in, that would be dormant until somebody comes in and ties into it? The reason why I ask that is sometimes when you put roads in at advance and it's not being used, sometimes the maintenance and the repair is more expensive than if it's actually being driven on. And again, I'm no engineer, so the question is, on the segmentation, are there any lines that are put in that would be in place but dormant until somebody comes and ties into them?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Pizzillo, I don't think there's anything that would prohibit that, but I don't think it's likely that it would occur. It's anticipated that- It's anticipated that if someone is going to invest in installing the line, they're doing it because they intend to use it, and that's what would be consistent with the phasing, that they only want to put the line in that will get used and not put a line in that would not get used.
Okay. Second question, and again, that I asked today, was in the fiscal analysis, it talks about the half a percent that you mentioned of any reimbursement process to cover some of these costs. And I guess the thing that dropped out maybe was the term "some of the cost." Is that because of an estimate? I just want to make sure that if additional burden is placed on us in far as the accounting for this, when you're giving money back to the very people that tying into, that we are recovering our cost. I guess the thing that was, that troubled me was the term "some of the cost."
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Pizzillo. I use the term "some" because I can't guarantee that it would necessarily cover all of the costs, and I certainly didn't want to lead you in that direction if I could not verify that. It's difficult to say how much effort is going to be involved in administering it. A lot of it depends on how the lines get constructed. The reimbursement is paid only on the money that's collected, and if the, if there's a developer that installs the majority of the line or extraordinary majority of the line, we wouldn't collect a reimbursement on that because there's no reimbursement to be made because it's not eligible. We would only collect it on the balance. So, I mean, I can't, like I said, I can't stand here and guarantee that it's a dollar for dollar reimbursement, but that's what's been negotiated, is a half of 1%, and that's what we expect to collect.
Okay, so, and I can appreciate that it's hard to get this exact, would you say that's a fair, fair price? A half a cent?
Well...
My only concern, Joe, is again, we've always had this theory that, you know, new growth pays for itself, and the only thing that said that stood up maybe was when I saw some of the cost. And I understand that it's sometimes hard to examine that, but my wheels start turning when I hear "some." I mean, if it's close, because we really don't know how to estimate, that's one thing. I just don't want to be subsidized as a result of additional time for staff putting in and tracking the accounting and a mechanism. And again, if one person puts all the lines in, then you're going to have, or they both put it up front, you're probably going to have very little of reimbursement, so you're going to have very little activity. So I can appreciate it's probably a little more difficult to track some of those things. So that, I can see that. But, yeah, that's the only reason I got to ask that question, because it's "some of," and I just want to make sure that we are covering our cost of staff if we've got to be the accountant for the developer.
Well, as I said before, it's hard to calculate. We don't have a lot of experience in recent years with administering them because there's not, frankly, there's not been much going on in terms of the cost recovery resolutions that we do have in place. So it's, we don't have a really a history to help us project the expenses at the same time.
Okay, I mean, if you don't have those, and I can appreciate that, maybe as this thing moves forward and depending on the situation, you'll be able to at least track it, get a better idea as these things roll down the road a little bit down on what that cost may be. And I appreciate you trying to be fair without overcharging the developer as well. But again, you know, if we're going to end up being the accountant on reimbursements, I just want to make sure that we're covering our costs, that's all.
Certainly understand your concern, and that's something we can try to watch as we go forward administering this one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Councilman Campbell?
I have two questions, Joe. Are the developers on board with how we want to do this?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Campbell, we've held meetings with the development, the developers in the West Goodyear group and have worked very closely with them in bringing this forward, and this is one of the items related to the revised development agreements that we said we would do, and we're doing it tonight.
Do we know that all are in agreement with this? Are all of them, all 14 or 16 of them?
I can't say with certainty that all of them are in agreement. We've notified all of them. We have not heard from all of them. At the same time, we have not heard objections from anyone.
Okay, and you don't know what the cost to the city will be? We don't have a ballpark of what the cost might be?
I honestly can't answer that tonight.
That's fine. I just want to make sure I understood what you just said to Councilmember Pizzillo, that we don't know the cost exactly.
That's correct.
Because we don't have a history of knowing what it would cost to do this.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Sounds very innovative, and hopefully it will spur development.
Any other? Councilman Stipp?
Joe, I'm going to try to come at this from a different, a different angle. Are you comfortable or confident that the five and a half will guess close? I mean, a half, the half percent. Right now, it sounds like it's an absolute guess, and I'd like to be a little bit more confident in my vote that it's better than a guess and it's not exact. I mean, I'm getting that as well.
Can we bring somebody else up, Joe?
Larry, would Mayor like to bring up Larry?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think we're putting him on the spot, and that's not what his job was in the presentation, so go ahead, Larry.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, since all of you have kind of asked the question on this. Joe's correct that we can't estimate the cost of this, and it is, I would say, it's very, it is a bit complex to administer, but the reason it's complex to administer is, is that you've got all of these parcels that are developing over an extended period of time, and how best to get that cost in? The bigger cost alternative would be for us to fund those lines, and that cost gets huge. So while, while we can't say, we're not talking a full-time person to administer it, we're, what we're talking about is within the duties of what we do between the planning, you know, Development Services and in the Finance Department to track it, collect it, and then submit it back. We have done, you know, we have done similar things. The original agreements had some prepayments in it. We've been tracking those. So in the context of what you're looking at, I'm going to say the cost of administering it is relatively immaterial, and I'm satisfied with that fee coming in as, as, coming back to us as somewhat of a recovery of the cost, whether it is down to the, you know, down to the dime doesn't really, isn't material in my view to this.
And I think that, that answers the question about the confidence of the number. Otherwise, it sounds like we were just guessing or taking someone else's word for it. So my second question, follow-up to that, these are not uncommon, these, they may be in Arizona, the cost recovery models.
No, you're correct on that. This is a model that's been used many times before. I used it in a different community, a very similar type thing. What gets complicated on it is, is when you've got the broader bulk parcels doing it, but it's, it's the quantity of parcels and how it all fits.
One of the models that I've seen, and this gets to my question, is one of the models that I've seen is that the developer themselves actually pay for that partial construction, and then anybody who, who attaches to it are, it's between them and the, the attacher to initiate the cost recovery, and the city or the town is completely out of the loop. Is that even allowed by Arizona law, or was that even considered?
Well, I think the problem is, is that then you've got infrastructure there that someone can tap into. We're allowing them to tap into it, and someone else paid for it. And so what the cost recovery ordinance is intending to do is to put the teeth in upfront that provides the mandate that if you want to hook into this line, you have to pay your proportionate share of the cost. I'm not aware of any other way other than making it total voluntary and you kind of know how that'll work within Arizona to make it work.
Okay, thanks for entertaining the questions.
Councilman Osborne?
Just for understanding sake, this, this is something that could go on for quite a few years, this development. Whose department really is this going to be in for monitoring over these next years? Will it be Development Services, or will it be the Finance Department? Who's really going to be controlling this, watching over it?
Joe, do you need us to call back up again?
Well, Mayor Lord, Councilmember Osborne, the, it really requires the involvement of both departments because of the collection and dispersment of funds, and then knowing which funds are to be dispersed based on what's been constructed. It'll also involve the Engineering Department in, in following or reviewing the cost estimates before the construction is done, and then the actual cost once the construction is completed, because cost recovery resolution allows reimbursement up to the maximum estimated cost. If the actual exceeds it, it's capped off at the maximum. If it's actually less, then the reimbursement is based on actual cost. So it's going to require coordination between Engineering, Development Services, and Finance.
Okay, so it won't be a surprise for anybody. That's good. All right, thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment. I've had for the last year or two, several developers come in, sit down at the table, and look at how they're going to finance starting a home building in the area, and especially this particular area. So think about, you know, I've got six flats together, and the guy that wants to develop it is way up here in the end, okay? So that means he's got to pay for five or six in order to get to him, and so had to have a solution. We want this area to develop. It's very important that it, that we get it going. Other cities are doing cash initiatives and all kinds of discounts, and then they're finding other ways that you don't know to attract builders. And I think that this is the most practical way without giving away the ship, okay, as you might say. I think this is, this says that we're, that we're welcoming them to the city, that we want them to be in our city. And so you either want to develop your city, and especially still coming out of the downturn, or you want to sit back and wait till somebody comes in with cold cash. And I'm going to tell you, that's not going to happen for an awfully long time. So I'm, I'm excited about it, and I, and I believe the people that are involved in it right now, and not everybody is yet, I think they're excited, and I think you'll hear more from them. It shows that the city is interested in helping them and, and advancing our city, so thank you. I like the, I like the whole program, so.
Okay, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, that's where I'm at, right? Would anybody like to?
Actually, you can just take a roll call vote at this point?
I can just do it. What are you asking me?
You can take a roll call vote now?
Roll call vote. I'm sorry. You see, when I ever get involved in something, to say something, I'll lose my place. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stipp?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
And that was on seven point two. All right. We're going to seven point one. We've already had the presentation, so are there any speakers, speaker cards?
I can go to seven point two now.
Oh, I said seven point two. Did I say seven point one? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can go into seven point two and open the public.
No, I meant, I'm looking at seven point two. Okay, are there any speaker cards? Oh, jeez, I'll never get this right, will I, guys? Public hearing to consider amending the resolution of an intention for the West Goodyear Special Improvement Project area for regional wastewater trunk line improvements. Just opened the meeting. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution 16-1748 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 16-1748, amending Resolution of Intention Number 06-1065, as amended by Resolution Number 14-1622, to provide for reimbursements for regional wastewater trunk line improvements identified as special public improvements in the West Goodyear Central Planning Area, Special Public Improvement Project area, when only portions of the wastewater trunk line improvements are constructed and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion, a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman, Vice Mayor Loretano, and a second by Councilman Stipp. All right, open for council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stipp?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Joe, thank you. All right, let's go to seven point three. It's a public hearing to consider a special use permit to allow the installation of a Verizon Wireless Communication Facility at 17605 West McDowell Road. Pardon me. Open public meeting. Hello, Alex Lutinsky will present.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This next item is a request from Reliant Land Services on behalf of Verizon Wireless. They are requesting a special use permit to allow 65-foot monopalm cell tower on the east side of Citrus Road, just north of the Interstate 10. The parcel is Zone C2 General Commercial. ADOT does own the property right now. They use it for storage as they work on the 303. In the future, it will be used as the commercial parcel. Staff did work with the applicant on the location of the, the monopalm, just to ensure that the site can be used in the future. There is a diesel backup generator in the event of a power loss. The generator will run once a week for testing purposes, and the facility does include an air conditioner to cool the equipment inside the shelter. Routine maintenance will be performed once a month, and the access of the facility will be available off McDowell Road. From the north, you can see the little, the strip that comes down to this site. The facility is 802 square feet. Like I said, 65 feet is the monopalm height. Here I have the photo simulations to see how it'll look in the future. It will be screened by an eight-foot screen wall. It does use the palm tree design to blend in with the desert landscape. All design and placement criteria have been met. The public notification requirements have been satisfied as well. The project was recommended approval six to one by the Planning Commission. One commissioner did vote against the, the monopalm in favor of a more artistic design element instead of the standard monopalm. But this concludes my presentation, and the applicant is available if you have any questions, and I can answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would the applicant like to speak? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, no, she is available.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to? All right, so we're going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, a second, to approve a special use permit to allow the installation of a wireless communication facility at 17605 West McDowell Road, subject to stipulations? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell, a second by Councilman Holman. Open for council discussion. Councilman Campbell?
I have two questions, and I don't know, Alex, if you can answer them for me. You said they're going to put a wall around it, and I'm assuming that whatever they use, they will use the type of paint that will not allow graffiti to stick to it.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. I actually don't know the answer to the, that question.
Can you, would you?
The applicant can answer.
I'd like, yeah, because I know where this, I went out here today to look at that.
Is this Melissa or Heather?
Melissa.
Melissa. All right, this is Melissa Parker coming for.
Thank you.
Yes, they can.
Please get closer to the mic, hon, sorry.
Yes, we can do some things with the paint to prevent that.
Well, because it's somewhat going to be isolated a little bit, it's a wonderful target for drive-by folks to tag it, and I would appreciate it, I'm sure the city would appreciate it, not just me, but the city, that you do what you can so that if it does, if graffiti does get on it, it's removed immediately and it's not, there's certain paints I know you can use on these because I've seen them before.
Yes, they'll try their best to prevent it, and if it is noticed, they'll come right out and maintain it.
Perfect.
It is in a gated area.
Yes, it is.
So it will prevent it a little bit more, but we will try aesthetically and to maintain it.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is, when you build a tower, how far out is your range going to be? Do you know?
It depends on the volume of capacity that's going on in the area. If there is more development, then it can be less. If it is kind of, right now, there's less development going on there, so it can expand further, but the more you have in the way or the direction.
The more you, yeah, right.
Yeah, then it can trigger that, but right now, it's kind of open, so it can expand further.
And if this is approved tonight? And if this is approved tonight, when do you plan on this being built?
We would like to go right into permitting and to order the tower, so I would say probably within six months.
Okay. Because we've had numerous complaints from people who are on the Tuscany side of Pebble Creek with Verizon that are losing their signals. And I have Verizon, and I'm on the Eagles Nest side, and I have absolutely no problem. I've not dropped a call. But it was because we're closer to a cell tower on our side than those folks that are building out in Unit 60, 43A, 43B, 64, 65, 66. And by this, I drove out to make sure that they would have a direct line until something else is built. That may alleviate some of their concerns, and that's why it was.
It should do that.
Good. That's wonderful. Thank you.
So that's good news.
It is very good news, yes, yes, yes.
Councilmember Osborne? I just had one question. I noticed that with Luke Air Force Base that you need a, a no-hazard determination from the FFA. Has that been approved yet, do you know?
We do have that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Let's go to 7.4. It's a public hearing to consider amending the use permit for Australia Falls to permit an additional freeway pylon sign with electronic message display. Open the public.
Sorry, Mayor.
I'm going to stop right here a moment. You're going to ask, if you excuse yourself now?
Yes, I would like to.
Make the request. We have to vote on this, or we do, no?
I will be recusing myself from, I'll be recusing myself from this item and the next as a landowner.
All right, that's Councilman Osborne. Okay, so I opened the public here, well, opened the public hearing. Planner 3, Steve Caricia, will present. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mayor, the next two items do concern.
Can you just talk, either pull that up a little closer or something? A little, little faint there. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, the next two items do concern Australia Falls. We do have the use permit and the amendment to the comprehensive sign package. I did have more of an overall presentation that I could give to cover both items, and obviously, if there's any questions throughout, please stop me, but.
Okay.
This is the Australia Falls development bounded by the red line. Here we have McDowell Road, Pebble Creek, and Bullard. This is the existing market at Australia Falls Center, Cal Ranch, TJ Maxx, Old Navy. Bullard Wash here. This is the future mall site here. This is where Harkins is proposed. The zoning, commercial zoning for Australia Falls approved in 2000. Comprehensive sign package for Australia Falls was approved in 2006, and that sign package established the criteria, sign criteria for the market at Australia Falls. It also established design criteria for the freeway pylons along this parcel here. Also in 2006, you had the use permit that permitted those freeway pylon signs. There were two of them approved for the site. 2008, we had a site plan approval for two freeway, freeway pylon signs. One, basically each corner here, one here, one here. This one here is the one that's built to date.
Would you repeat that list, please? I'm sorry. Where, where are they?
Two are approved, one here, and this is the one that's currently existing right now. The other one approved is on the other corner here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the two items we have tonight, we do have that use permit tonight, request to add the third freeway pylon sign for Australia Falls. The applicant is also proposing several changes to the existing comprehensive sign package. So part of my presentation is I will just go through the portions of the signage that has changed. And one of the first things that we'll look at is the Australia Falls development. There are four subsections. One, two, the power center, and then three and four, future mixed-use areas. What the applicant would like to do is further subdivide SubArea 1. So we have 1A, the mall and the theater. Two would be the peripheral lots surrounding the mall site, and then C and D are future mixed-use parcels to the west. Another change is, and this is especially with the use permit, is that third freeway pylon sign, the applicant would like to designate one of those for the mall site. And what they are requesting is, on that sign, would be this reader, electronic reader panel right here. Basically, the sign matches the existing sign, existing design approved with the comprehensive sign package. Again, the main change is this electronic reader display. The other thing applicant is doing is just changing up the logo a bit. They're using the Starburst versus the star and the tail design that you've seen on existing signs now. So they're going to do a little different branding and go with this design here. And again, you can see this is the existing approved design. And it'll match the same height, 85 feet tall, same material, same colors. And again, this exhibit just shows A2 is the existing sign. A1, that's another sign that's approved. This sign in the middle, if the use permit is approved, that sign would go here. The next two exhibits will basically just show perspectives of the freeway pylon signs from different vantage points. Okay, so moving to the mall site itself, what the amendment will do is establish some of the freestanding monument signs for the development. And they'll have six freestanding multi-tenant monument signs, different locations around the mall site. On the corners, you'll see they'll have project identification signage. And then F1 will be temporary marketing signage that we'll look at in a little bit, but they're proposed here along McDowell Road. And this is just rendition of the multi-tenant monument sign, 20 feet tall, have panels for several different users. Basically, it's the same design that's used at the market at Australia Falls. Again, a little different. They'll have the Starburst here versus the Stars and Tail. And this is the temporary marketing sign that was, they had two of them proposed along McDowell Road. The applicant has indicated that for the beginning, they'll probably face this sign, likely do notice for the mall, the mall site, and likely Harkins. As things with the property develop, they can add different pieces and inform the public of what's going on with the property. Sign package also established wall signage for Harkins, the signage on the four sides of the building, along with the movie posters. Sign package also establishes the signage for the peripheral lots, and will have eight multi-tenant monument signs kind of surrounding the mall site. These will be a little smaller, 10 feet tall, either single tenant or multi-tenant. Another change is to the existing power center, to the market at Australia Falls. They have seven signs now, seven multi-tenant monument signs. What the applicant would like to do is add three more signs, two along Pebble Creek, and another one here along McDowell. And again, there'd be 10 total signs. The three new ones would basically just use the same design that's already out there now. And again, a smaller change, the applicant just general requirements procedures for all the different subareas just consolidated into one spot so that we could have ease of use as we're administering a sign package. Because it was a public hearing, the use permit did require public notice. We did notice 500 feet round that property containing the use permit, the pylon signs. To date, staff has not received any public inquiries on the use permit request. We've reviewed both applications, the amendment to the comprehensive sign package and the use permit. We do find it consistent with our sign code and with the PAD for Australia Falls. Staff and both, both staff and the planning commission, we are recommending approval of both applications, subject to the stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Great, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak? All right, great, thank you. All right, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I please have a motion and a second to approve a request to amend the use permit for Australia Falls to permit an additional freeway pylon sign with electronic message display, subject to stipulations? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
I am, I am jammed between a rock and hard place, simply because I initially voted against the digital billboard.
You voted against what?
I voted against the digital billboards, simply because they weren't in keeping with what we had envisioned as a long-term vision of the I-10 corridor. But now we have them, and they're everywhere. So I find myself having to approve this. I have also been a big proponent of we don't have enough signage for our businesses in our power centers, et cetera. And a request to add signs would, if I didn't vote in support of that, would be kind of contradictory to what I've been asking for. So based on, on those two, I'm in support of making these changes. I also appreciate the applicant looking to become what I assume is a little bit more aggressive in marketing, getting the signage out, updating the look of the star. It looks a little bit more modern and gives us, hopefully, an opportunity to, to really showcase that, that project. We all obviously wish that we'd be talking about updating a sign package for an existing mall, but given the fact that we're still trying to get it, get it up and moving, anything we can do to, to help that, I, I think is, is important for us to support, so.
Councilman Pizzillo, thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I'm in favor. First of all, when it comes to digital signs, I think it's a great attractor. I think even the ones we have on the highway are done very nicely. In fact, if you look through 101 and 10, you look at our sign package compared to some of the other cities, I would put us above, tops above all the others as far as looks and feel. In fact, my thoughts are, as the quicker you get those things built and put names on there, that means the quicker we have actually businesses in there. So I'll for it. Anything that'll help you move the mall forward, move the retail forward, I'm all in. So I appreciate your effort. I appreciate your marketing effort, and my only angst is, is the more and the faster we can get them in there, the better I like it. So I'm in.
Vice Mayor?
I, I'm going to concur with my colleagues. I think it is very important, and I think it's very important that we get signage there because we want this, these businesses as they go in, even before the big mall is built. We want to make sure that Harkins exceeds. We want to make sure that we draw the people into that area. I've always been a fan of the digital billboards. I think they're very modern and very sleek and up to date. So I think the signage is a great way to get the message out for, for the retailers and to get the business there. So I think that's important. I'm really glad to see that Councilmember Stip has evolved in that issue. So I'll be voting yes because I, I want to see the signage, and I think if, as we, as the mall grows and more needs to be done, or if we're finding we're having a problem, I appreciate the fact you guys are willing to come back and say, well, as we're looking at, we're going to need more signage here, or we need signage here. And I, I think that's a great relationship, so I appreciate it.
Great. Any other comments? Councilman Campbell?
I've got a couple of questions on several different pages. So on page nine of the comprehensive sign plan, where you're showing we're on Interstate 10, coming up to Bullard Avenue, and I see three signs, three pylon signs. And I'm assuming that the first one, I, I don't know which one is approved now and which one are we trying to stick in there? No, that's not the one I have. I have one, oh, yes, that's the one I have. That's, that's the one I'm looking at.
Mayor? Designate which sides are up and which ones that were maybe new.
Yeah.
Mayor, council members?
Uh-huh.
This is the, kind of the visibility cone here. So this is the one that's up right now.
The one on the right is up, and the one right behind the sign that says Estrella Parkway, that's where they want to put it.
Right, so this one would be the one you would see now.
Okay. So where is the digital billboard going to be exactly?
In this view, you would not see it yet. It's this one right here. So it's kind of just outside.
Right where?
This one right there.
So would that be closer to Australia Parkway than Bullard? It's right here.
Mayor, council members, the sign with the digital display is the one closest to Bullard. It'll be, it'll be this one right there.
All right. So I use the Bullard exit every day to go home, so it'll be at my exit.
Yes.
All right, and that's where the, the digital will be. Okay. Do we have in place requirements on what the digital, the brightness of the digital sign can be? Because if you drive our Interstate 10 between 10 o'clock at night and 1:00 in the morning, and you're going by our Autoplex, it is so bright, it hurts your eyes. And I wanted to know what's going to be on the digital. Is it just going to be sale today, come in now, or new store open? I mean, is that?
Could you just direct to the where that is? Because it is in the presentation on, on the lighting. I don't know if it's on your presentation.
What the lumens are.
Yeah, it, it has a whole section on it. Tells you about the, the lighting. It tells you about all of this. So I don't know if you can call that up, but it's, it's in there.
Mayor, council members, yes, it is in there between the sign package and the stipulations. The applicant is following the state standards on, on this. So basically, you'll have a maximum brightness to the sign during the day from basically sunset to 11:00, it'll drop down. And then basically after 11:00 to sunrise, the sign is off.
Sign is off. Oh, that's even better because I don't, I love the signs. I don't want it to distract the drivers. In that particular area, it's really dark, and the sign flashing might be a deterrent as well. So on page number 19, if you don't mind going there, please. Oh, no, I'm sorry, excuse me, 17. This, the development signs are what I asked for six, eight years ago, that we, because Surprise has them. They're in a beautiful color. They're not gray.
The series of signs right there.
Bright and beautiful, and they really make it look alive. So I'm hoping that these are just a rendition of what it might look like, but they're definitely maybe not going to be gray to match the brown dirt. So it looks, you know, need it to look.
You want something to show up.
Yeah, right, right.
Sure. I mean, what's shown there is more to entitle the sign.
Rob, can you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm sorry. Rob Bassett with Mesa Ridge.
Okay, that's perfect. That's all I wanted to know. I just wanted to make sure we weren't approving these colors, because even the sign that's up now is pretty pitiful looking, if it's still up.
The one that's up, yeah. It, they're hardly noticeable. We wanted to make sure we entitled something that's.
Okay, I think this is a wonderful idea because it gets excitement. It lets people know what's coming, what's open, what are we doing, and it's a great way to sell that corner and to, to really kickstart it. So I appreciate having that done. And then on the sign package for the theater, you're just asking where the placement is, not the colors, right?
Are you talking about the building signage?
Page 19.
Oh, no.
It's just the place. It's just the placement of where you're putting what the name is of the theater.
Those are all shown conceptually. We would.
Perfect, okay.
Put Harkins probably closer to the left and phase the sign from left to right.
Just so that people can see it, don't make it so little they can't see what it is, because for a long time, it's going to be there by itself, but we hope not too long.
The idea is also to have a coming soon on Harkins and then it'll open.
Right, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much, appreciate it. It looks wonderful.
Thank you.
Councilman Holman?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on, and it's kind of been said already, but I just wanted to reiterate that the signage is probably one of the most important things you can do for the retail people that are going into your center. There's no question about that, and I think anything we can do to support that is a win-win. And so I, I will be supporting this issue.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? All right, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Let's go to 7.5. Now you're going to consider an amendment to the comprehensive sign package for Australia Falls, and I think you've given that all of the, Steve, yeah, they're okay. So are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Oh, can I have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
I'm sorry, you have a comment?
No, I jumped ahead. Don't move.
Oh.
I'm moving over here.
Oh, he's moving, all right. Let's repeat that. Could I now have a motion and a second to approve an amendment, amendment to the comprehensive sign package for Australia Falls, subject to stipulations? Oh, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Vazillo. All right, I got you. And Councilman Stiff made the second. Open for council discussion. I think we've had all that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll go down to 7.6. The last item on business is to consider accepting the facilities master plan. Public Works Director Javier, I'm sorry, Javier, y'all have to pronounce that name for me, I, I get it wrong all the time, so Setevich?
Javier Setevich.
Oh, I got it right, all right, I'm not feeling so badly now. We'll make a few introductory remarks, and Municipal Services, Services Manager Mark Flynn and Tom Riley, Architecton, will present. Hello, Mr. Flynn.
If you'll bear with me this evening, I may cover some of those introductory comments for my director as well.
All right.
I gravely this evening for him.
All right.
It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Tom Riley from Architecton to my left, and another colleague from Architecton, Chris Kelly, are also joining us this evening.
Welcome, gentlemen.
We're here this evening to present the master plan, the facilities master plan that we've developed and worked on for about the last year or so, and want to just talk briefly about what, some of the things we've done and kind of where we're heading this evening. Excuse me, we've put together in the, a plan that we use as a reference document for the city, a plan that will allow us to use a framework to model how we'll move forward with regard to facilities' needs on behalf of the city as we deliver services to the general citizenry. The approach was to create a strategy that's adaptive, doesn't require sequential implementation, we have the ability to look at what the needs of the city are and how those are occurring, and allow us to respond to those based upon trigger points and events that we have identified within the plan, the need for delivery, the delivery of services, or the need to accommodate staff growth that may be, may be occurring. We want to use the plan as a source of solutions. We want to be able to use this as that framework and that guide to allow us to know what our anticipated needs may be and how we might potentially be able to resolve those. We last visited with you in November of 2015, and since that time, we've been able to draw a lot of the finer points of the plan back together, bring it to its final stage, we'll talk a little about what some of those are, and then we'll walk you through a summary of the plan. We took the vision that you provided us for the city center, the idea of potentially delaying the city center outside the existing 10-year capital improvement plan. We didn't want the, the focus to be that with your guidance, the idea of pushing that off allowed us to look at some other creative strategies about some other facilities' needs on behalf of the city. The existing facilities that we looked at, the potential for their ability to support city needs and services, were the primary reason for making that decision. Projecting when in a changing environment is always a bit of a challenge. We in turn have focused on the what events that would trigger space needs. What are the services that we're trying to deliver on behalf of the citizenry? How are we doing that? How are we meeting that with staffing needs? And then what are the facilities' needs to accommodate the ability to deliver those components? Timing for population growth is used as a secondary reference point. Obviously, the, the first idea was to tie the city growing to a, a number of, X number of residents would require additional space be needed. We've looked at it the other way. What are the services we're delivering, and then using those, those population numbers as a secondary reference point? We also went back to the stakeholders, the department directors, the senior administration of the city, to make sure that, that we were hitting their needs, identifying the things that they had shared with us, and we're able to capture those effectively and efficiently within the, within the plan. And then we've also been extremely critical about interim solutions. We want to make sure that we're delivering a quality product and an interim solution to allow us to grow into the space that we need and continue to deliver those services. We've studied the value of those interim solutions to a, to a high degree of, of accuracy and refinement, to make sure that we're not spending good dollars after bad. And then finally, we, we'll discuss the plan, the opportunity, we'll discuss in the plan the opportunity for properties that the city has that are not identified as having a potential need for us in the very near future, what some of the options might be for those, and how we might be able to work some of those into what some of the future facility needs may be. With that, I'm going to introduce Tom Riley from Architecton, who'll finalize the presentation and walk you through the, the slides that we've prepared this evening.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us back. I'm going to go through this presentation, the parts that you've seen already, just as a little bit of a refresher, I'll go through those fairly quickly and try to focus on the items that have changed since we were here in November. So to set the stage, we, you're currently occupying over a quarter million square feet of buildings in the city of Goodyear. I'm happy to report that they are, for the most part, in great shape, they've been wonderfully maintained. There's a couple of exceptions, they're minor, and we'll talk a little bit about those today. As Mark pointed out, we've gone back to take a look at what the options would be if you took city center out of the 10-year CIP, and that's what we'll focus on tonight. Also, as Mark pointed out, the staff expectations of growth were not tied to population growth, but it is one of the measures that we use for benchmarking, and again, happy to report that the city of Goodyear is benchmarked against 21 other cities, looks great as far as staff per thousand, and we're only showing that you're going to become more efficient in the use of space and following the trend that's happening in other businesses and the reduction of hard-well offices and the reduction of space that you see from that. Goodyear Municipal Complex, where we are today, is in great shape, there's room for expansion. The really good news here is that the court, courtrooms for the 20-year horizon of this report seem to be adequate and won't require more space. The facility at Calle de Pueblo is, is one of the few facilities that needs some immediate attention, and we'll talk a little bit about how that can be remedied in both the short and the, and the midterm. 157th Avenue is well set up to work as a public works, it's located in the geographic heart of the anticipated growth of the city and has plenty of room for expansion. Your public safety needs have also been well planned and maintained for both fire and police. So we're anticipating a growth to a total of 115,000 square feet here at Goodyear Municipal Complex. That could be accommodated in a number of ways. As you know, Police Ops 1 is currently under construction and due to open in the next year. We're looking at the growth of Police Ops 2, and, and a, and a new thing that we brought forward that staff and your department managers have thought of is moving traffic management eventually into that Police Ops 2. One of the nice pieces of doing that is, is it puts a better response for emergencies all in one place, combined with the EOC and the 911 call center. So that seemed to make a lot of sense. You also have room for expansion to accommodate the growth of development services in a couple of different places, and the only thing that we were suggesting be added for the courts was as you increase the criminal hearings, that you provide the Sallyport for the safety of officers and the safe transportation of prisoners. At 157th Avenue, we're looking at, from the current, some growth through the 20-year horizon of the report. Most of that is in warehouse and shop space, a lot of that is to accommodate better purchasing power for the city and being able to buy in bulk. This is one of several site plans that we developed. Again, the facility out there is, the land is so large, you've got a lot of options, even if State Route 30 eventually goes through in the land that it would take, it's, it's a relatively small portion of the city-owned land out there. So in the midterm, we'd like to talk about some specific issues. Your, the city already owns three of the fire facility sites that are forecasted to be needed, and then the other properties that were considered are listed here. To put this in perspective, the midterm shortfall is a little bit over 10% of your current space, and the long-term shortfall is right around 20% of your current space. So specifically, in the near term, at this existing city hall, there's been a discussion to move the server room over to the 911 call center, where it's already set up as a data center, has all the support features, and there's room for that to be accommodated over there, and I believe APS has given notice that they'll be vacating by the end of the summer. So we're suggesting a modest amount of money to repurpose those spaces to accommodate some of the existing growth needs within the city hall. You've already leased one acre of additional parking space at Calle de Pueblo to, to take care of some of the vehicle needs in association with the parks and the traffic ops. We're talking about moving traffic management out of Calle de Pueblo temporarily over to 986 South Litchfield Road, where it would share space with Public Safety Special Ops that will help relieve the pressure on that facility in the near term. All of those issues exist today. In the midterm, we're projecting that there would be some additional growth for development support here on this campus. Some of that can be accommodated relatively easy as the training functions currently happening wind down, so you've already got the shell space, so that would be TIs. We're looking at, at sometime in that midterm, building out the shops and warehouses at 157th Avenue. That would provide the final solution for Calle de Pueblo as those two remaining functions would move out there. The other thing that we're projecting is continued growth at City Hall. There's room within that building to get a little bit tighter, to be a little bit more efficient with the use of the space, so we're saying that there's some money that you're going to want to look at at some point along the line to do that. Doesn't have to happen all at once, it could be incremental. It could be as simple as some new furniture systems, just to make that space a little bit more efficient. The security improvements at GMC, we talked about the Sallyport, a better detainee route into the existing courtrooms, and eventually, potentially, in addition, between buildings B and D to accommodate even more growth that might happen at development support. We did see a need to potentially move the Police Ops 2 up four years in the CIP, there's some additional costs that would come with that in getting ahead of the, the funds that it would take to do that, and then finally, pulling City Center out of the existing CIP. The other thing you asked us to look at is potential surplus property. This is property that either has been identified now, in the case of 120 East Western, for no uses, no current uses, or a property that would become available as the Police Ops projects come onboard, or the additions out at 157th. So these are all properties that you could consider in the future as surplus. You also have Duncan Farms currently, which doesn't have any city uses on it currently. And eventually, if and when City Center was built, it would make City Hall an opportunity for surplusing.
Again, this evening, our intent is to present to you the final draft of the final master plan itself. The other component that I want to make sure I can, I can share with you is that the idea is that this is a, a kind of a living document, the idea that we'll come back and we'll revisit this on an annual basis, as we look at the services that the city's delivering, what the population is, what the staff numbers look like, and what some of those potential reuses of other facilities might be, or how we might be able to accommodate others' needs. The idea about bringing those back in an annual fashion to allow us to, to provide you with information for your consideration, as we begin to look at what budget requirements would be to make some of those things happen, we see that on an annual basis is being a, a great value for us, to be able to continue to review what it is we're suggesting, to look at all, other alternatives that may arise, and then to be able to make sure that we're making the best decisions possible with the information that we have. That concludes our presentation this evening. We do have a formal copy of the plan to provide to you. We're also happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody, anybody in the audience like to speak? Could I have a motion and a second to accept the facilities' master plan outlining a framework for the current and future facility, city facility needs? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Holman, and a second from Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stiff?
Marked by us adopting this tonight. We're not binding future councils on this.
No, no, sir, not, not at all. With, the idea would be that the, the projects that we're discussing within the plan or the recommendations that we're making, those would come back to you for review, either through capital improvement plan, planning actions and budget decisions associated with that, or through the supplemental process tied to the budget process on an annual basis. By no means is, is this set in stone. This is the idea of a, a plan that can continue to develop. This is the framework for that recommendation.
I, I think the language that you used when you kicked off the presentation, that this becomes a, a guiding document, and one that to help with future decision-making was very appropriate.
Thank you.
And it, it almost makes it seem as though it, it may not necessarily even require council action, and I realize historically, we approve all master plans, so I can see why it's before us, but for the, for the public and for, you know, for them to understand that just because we approved this tonight does not mean we are going to be building another 100,000 square feet of, of future office space, excuse me, you know, et cetera, that, that this is really just a, a guiding document to help inform our decisions going forward, so.
Our discussions tied to the plan have been that there would be a periodic review, perhaps on an annual basis, in preparation to lead into the budget process, to make sure that we're making good decisions. So I, I apologize if I, I misguided you in that thought, but our, our desire was to come back and continue this dialogue.
Yeah, no, there was no, you were right on target. I just wanted to reiterate it, simply stated, for anyone who might be listening and, and trying to understand what we're doing, so.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Vice Mayor?
No?
Down here? Councilman Osborn?
Well, thank you for the, the snapshot and, and future look. I, I had questions earlier that has been answered regarding fire stations, so seeing how that worked with this, so I appreciate the background. But I do have one follow-up question, whether it's maybe in this material or for Brian that you give us later, is the information behind moving up the Police Phase 2 and that 1.2 million that it would cost to make that earlier, and understanding why that would be an increase in funds, so just having the follow-up back information on that, unless that's already in the book that you have there. Either way.
Well, the, the idea, the, the analysis that was done as part of, with the master planning team, was to look at what some of those triggers might be to create the need for space, and what we were doing is we were forecasting when space shortfalls might begin to occur. I think operate, Police Operations Phase 2, I think, was slated for about 2024, and we began to see some indications about shortages of needs that might begin to trigger earlier than that. Some of that's going to be tied to the services that the police group is offering, maybe what staff, what officer growth or, or police staff growth looks like, so that's where some of that ongoing analysis would occur. We thought one of the solutions may be that if that space need becomes critical, the idea might be to bring it back a little bit earlier.
Okay.
Have that, have that project potentially commence earlier than had originally been there.
And that's, and that's not, I understand that, and I, I can, we've discussed that need here for this past year, quite frankly. It was more understanding why it costs us more to move it up, that's what I was trying to understand more.
There, there is some analysis that we've begun to, to provide within the document to talk about what those forecasts for dollars would look like and what some of our assumptions were to, to.
Okay, that, that's what I need to know, thank you. All right.
Sorry for the confusion.
Any other?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Campbell?
Councilman Osborne brought up the fire stations. We have a proposed one on, in the CIP, but just because it's not identified in the facilities' plan, doesn't mean we don't need one, right?
No, not at all.
All right.
The, the idea was to say, here's what those pieces might be. No, the, the idea was to say, here's what those pieces might begin to look like.
Right.
And then some of their geo, their geographical presence within the city are going to be tied to, to where the growth is occurring and what those response times would be. I think the Fire Chief may have provided some of that information to you in a, in a recent presentation.
He did, yeah. He did. And my second question is, for some of the suggested reuse of some of the buildings that may empty out, council or we still have the ability to change our mind what goes in there, correct?
Very much so.
I mean, we can come up with something else if we thought it might work better.
I, I, I think that as part of that ongoing review, I would think that, that option remains present, yes.
Great, thank you.
Any other?
I had one thing that I, I was questioning. It says you'll be having less employees than more as the time went on, when you saw the numbers. But on public safety, we will never have less because it, you can't keep a city safe if you don't have the public safety. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, that one is definitely one that I saw a difference in my opinion than what I thought I read. So, just, just keep that in mind. The other thing I'd like to say before you come up, because you might want to make comment on that, what I'm saying, is that I, I really think there are some departments in our city that need to be together. And I think Development Services is one of those that needs to be in a City Hall with all of us there. And there may be some other ones. So, that, that's my concern as I read over it, that there might be some that we would want to bring back into the fold of a, of a City Hall.
Mayor, thank, thank you very much for that comment. I, I think we would agree that, that there are adjacencies amongst departments that offer efficiencies in how they work and how they operate. You, you heard us refer to what we call development support as opposed to Development Services or anything of the other.
Oh, okay, all right.
The idea that we're trying to keep some of those groups together, I think that's part of that ongoing analysis that we described to say, what are those space needs and how could they best be accommodated? And where would that growth occur? The idea about potential expansion with GMC is a way to accommodate some of that, to keep some of those core groups together. And then eventually, when City Center does become a reality or some type of additional planning associated with the City Hall, there was the idea that that would be a piece that would be reprogrammed at that point in time. With regard to the staffing levels, that, the number that we were referring to was the ratio of staff per residential population.
Yeah, I saw that too. But, but efficiency within departments is certainly, some departments, like I think of finance, I think of different, that are certainly technical, that they have not just manpower, but they have the technical power to make them more accessible. So, that's what I'm just saying. There's, there's, there's a difference in different departments on to.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And yet, and really through this whole thing, oh, I'm sorry. Are you saying somebody?
I'm sorry, I thought I saw Sherilyn trying to get your attention. Councilmember Holman.
No, no, sorry, she was talking to me.
They were talking then. I looked at her before I spoke. So, the other thing is, so, I didn't get a feel about this room as it grows. Is it nothing looking at it until we move to a City Hall? Do you know what I'm, I'm saying? We just kind of, that was kind of skirted over. Is there any consideration of that?
The, the analysis that was done with regard to, to the Justice Center was that the needs of the Justice Center can be met within the confines of the facility as we know it now.
So, the yellow section that was in the building that you showed, that would be the increase in square footage and space. And that could take, pardon me, that could take care of if we still had the dais and, and the, and these things in this room, in this area?
It could, yes.
Okay, all right. I just didn't see the verbiage of it, I just saw the yellow. Okay, all right.
Very good.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, so, thank you very much. So, let me see, where are we here? Thank you for it. It's open council discussion. I just want to, am I, am I right where I'm supposed to be? Because I got in a conversation again.
Just need to do a, all in favor or opposed? Just need to take a vote now.
Okay, thank you. All right, council discussion is finished. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
All right, now we're at the information. Does council have any comments, accommodations, current events you want to talk about? We've had some things happen in the city, so.
I, I would like to comment, and this is going to be more a general comment. But one of the reasons this city was attractive to me, and I've been around in Goodyear actively since 1980, is because of the people and the creativity of our people and the interest of, of our citizens in making things more fun and, and better, of quality of life. And I, I hate that term because who knows what, how that defines. But the quality of life. And I think a couple of the events that we had this weekend was the partnership once again to expand the pump track. It was, a lot of volunteers made that happen. A lot, corporations provided resources. And the other was the Sky Kids. Again, volunteers were creative. They created an event. Everybody wins at that event. There are no losers. It's touching, it's impressive, and it's exciting. And what's coming up this week? We have a police department, think out of the box. We have the K-9 trials, our competition at the ballpark this coming weekend. We have the, we had a preview of what's going to happen at the, at Estrella with the music festival. And we just had an amazing month at the ballpark. And all of that is the enthusiasm of our citizens, the enthusiasm of staff, people being willing to think outside of the box that makes us the community that we live in. That's why I'm here. I decided that, why would I leave a community who cares like this community cares? And I just think there are a whole lot of people that should be patting themselves on the back since we can't go around patting everybody that deserves it.
Thank you for those comments. Anybody else? Councilman Stipp?
I know that I've been physically absent for.
I noticed that.
Quite a while, but I have been keeping up with the activities of the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association Board. And as we've been receiving updates from our own inter, inter gov, Rob, I wanted to let the council know that there's a Senate vote that I think was planned for either today or tomorrow regarding Senate Bill 1268 and Senate Bill 1400, which basically reduces the effectiveness of the Arizona Groundwater Management Act of 1980. And I wanted to let everyone know that the AMOa board today delivered letters to the governor requesting that he veto both of those bills.
Right.
They're, they're detrimental to the long-term sustainability of our state when we start allowing individual water management areas to opt out of a statewide initiative to maintain our, our water. We've been so fortunate to not be in a situation of California because of the 1980 Groundwater Management Act. And now, we've got legislators that are pushing to undo that. And it, it baffles the mind, but I, I think the public needs to understand that what is being asked in Southern Arizona has an effect on all of Arizona. And it's important that, that we stand behind that Groundwater Management Act and understand that it really ensures our future. So, the Board of Directors, like I said, has, has taken a stand to oppose that. They've been opposing both of those bills, been speaking on them quite extensively throughout the session. And now that they've passed, or presumably will be passing through the Senate, the, the Board has, has sent letters to the governor, so.
It also sets up that Army Base, Army Post for a BRAC. So, nobody has mentioned that. It's going to affect that a great deal. So, Bill, I just, I should give it to you, I will in just a second. Bill, I, I really appreciate that, because I went to our inter gov too on this. I cannot believe that they would even consider this. And it is to do home development, you know, of the area. I understand the needs of the community, and I can understand how they're feeling, but not at the cost of our water. Councilman Vazillo?
You know, when I had mentioned earlier about, we know there, where most of our local citizens get their information from InFocus and our website. And to piggyback on what the mayor and Councilmember Stipp had just said, I think it's important, because I know we have a League of Cities that keeps abreast and lets us know what's going on down to our state legislature. But the only one really reading that are people like us. I personally think it's, it's a real ability from a, from a standpoint of transparency that I would love to see our website, a little section called Local Impact Based on State Legislation Action. Somewhere where we can inform our actual citizens of things, as a perfect example of what Councilmember Stipp just mentioned, in which lets our citizens know, since they do get a lot of their information from us, either in Focus or on the website, to let them know what's going on there and how it may impact their lives. I think it's important. We've seen cutbacks on newspaper coverage. We've seen Kim Pax on actual reporters in our council taking notes. And I really believe strongly that the only way that we're going to get this information out is we're just going to have to be proactive on it. And I, I don't know how the other feel, but I really believe in the, for our betterment of our citizens, we need to let them know, you know, what's going on out there in this respect.
Thank you, Joe. Next? Councilman Osborne?
Well, I, I appreciate all the hard work all of our staff gives to things. And Sherilyn, you did a great synopsis of all of the wonderful, as you said, I hate to say quality of life, but it is. It's, it's a great city that we live in. And, and, and I just have to say that, you know, it was exciting to be at Luke Days. That's another part of everything that we all love to see. And, and I have to brag, because one of our Goodyear boys is a Thunderbird. And, and that's something to be said about this great community and, and children that are raised here. And we should be proud of that. And it's just, you know, I, I watch over the years, especially after being here for 19 years, that you, you see the generations that have been coming through the city. You see what people are being successful at. And it's exciting to, to say that, that happened in Goodyear. And, and I'm really proud about that.
Yes, Councilman Campbell, thank you, Brian.
Thank you. I, I was with Sherilyn and the mayor and Joe, and we followed each other around all day Saturday, but we had a wonderful time. I did attend the ASU Kyle Center for Water Policy Leaders Roundtable, and I'm a part of that roundtable. We discussed how we could get the message out to residents about water conservation and how important it is with what we do, the way we conserve our water and how we treat it. One of the suggestions was that if we had publications as city and municipal leaders, we would use that vehicle to our residents. And I can remember us having this conversation before it was Water Conservation Month or Week or whenever we started. And we said we would like to see an article in, in Focus every time it comes out on water, or save it, or conservation, or what we're trying to do to educate our, our residents. So, to whoever does our InFocus, here's it, we're asking again, that's, that's a wonderful publication that we put out to our residents. And the last issue was just ads on things. There wasn't a lot of, there was a lot of content, but there was no meat in it. So, we, we really need to educate them, because they turn the water on, they take a shower, and they know the water's there, but they don't understand what all it takes to get the water to come out of their faucet and the cost involved. And one suggestion at this roundtable was that we engage some really high-profile sports figures like Larry Fitzgerald and other folks, because people seem to resonate with some of the Cardinal fellows, players, that they start a campaign and do a public service campaign for all of us in Maricopa County, because we're in the fight of our life right now over our water. And I'll keep you posted, because we'll be meeting again next month, and I'll tell you what we're laying out.
Any other? Well, I just don't, I'll go out to the water. Our, our water department is doing a campaign, and they're going to be bringing out things slowly. But, so you'll see that on Twitter and on Facebook, and I think you'll probably see it in the InFocus. But right along with that, I attended ASU School of Sustainability this week with Mark Holmes. And, and they were given, they were given an assignment, a project, okay? So, then they, three, three teams presented the outcome of the project. So, what they were doing, they were going to create a five- or 10-year pilot water sustainability incentive program for residential, commercial, and industrial developments for the city of Goodyear. They presented the pilot program to the city and, and with us there. And later, they may be coming before us and, and demonstrating this. So, if, if they come up with a successful plan, it could be adopted and we could implement it. And it was really, really nice seeing these creative, enthusiastic young people and their minds and how they think and how interested they were in having a sustainable place to live. So, anyway, it was great, and I really enjoyed it. The other thing, I just went to the groundbreaking for St. John Paul II Catholic High School. So, I think that's just a great accomplishment for the West Valley. We're all looking very forward to that, and I, I think it's, it was needed in the West Valley. I just want to say about the Sky Kids, this fifth annual fly day, they had more young people being flown this time than ever before, and they had a waiting list. So, they may have to kind of reorganize that and have some young people next year on a waiting list if they've already had a flight. All right, so it brings those other young people there. But a congratulations to the entire group that does that. It was very well organized this year, I thought, under the tent, on the, on the, on Skyway. Everything was very good. And Sheri, your husband did a great job. He took up a lot of children. Yeah, and he let my husband be the co-pilot, so it all went really well, so, yeah.
I missed it again.
You missed it again, I tell you. It was great. Okay, it's over to you, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, members of the council. I actually don't have anything to add, what's already been talked about by council tonight. So, in terms of follow-up, we did hear some things during the work session that we'll implement. And other than that, I have no other follow-up issues tonight. There, there may be some discussions on, on some of the ideas that came up tonight, but, but not in this setting.
Councilman Osborne had one more thing.
I, I just had a question, Brian. Something that I think our citizens will appreciate being proactive on, and it's not that I'm questioning that we're not already doing it, but I think that, especially the rains that we've had, the history of basin issues, standing water, people get nervous, especially right now, over mosquitoes. And so, if you can just always keep us in notice of that you've been watching over those areas, just so it's a, it's a proactive thought that our citizens see that we are watching it, because there's a lot of concern right now in the nation over that issue. And, and we know in the past that whether it's West Vile, or, West Nile, West Nile, yeah, I know, West Nile, or it's now Zika, or whatever you call it, it, it's a concern that people just don't understand necessarily. And so, if we have that, we always want to, you know, watch over it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, well, then we're going to just announce the next work session will be on April 18th. This meeting is adjourned.